I want to quickly have the people who are part of the meeting introduce themselves. And I'll start with our vice chair, Marguerite Cummings.
Hi, nice to meet everybody. Hello.
Thank you. And our immediate past chair, Sarah Beggs.
Hello, I'm Sarah Beggs.
And George Michaelick.
How, how is everybody tonight?
And that leaves Donna Montgomery, whose picture you won't see, but you can hear her voice.
Hi.
She's gorgeous.
Thank you, Marguerite.
Leo O'Leary, who was our sixth board member and has been fighting some problems with health and is apparently not going to be with us, although we won't be surprised if she materializes at a later time. Our current director, Charlotte Cannelli.
Hello.
Our assistant director, Lydia Sampson.
Hello.
Our ace board secretary, Casey Argiro, who has cut off both her mic and her picture, so you'll just have to take my word for it, she's there.
Hello, I am.
Yes, thank you, Casey. And we have a couple of people from the town of Norwood who are doing the tech stuff. And we have our lead consultant on the director search, who you'll be seeing more of in just a little bit, and that's Bernie Lynch. Bernie, say hi.
Good evening, glad to be here tonight. Exciting night.
And Carla Howard. Carla Howard is our circulation, marketing, media assistant. And she's our staff representative tonight.
Great. Carla, say hi.
Hello.
Or hello is good, too. So that's the welcome and introductions. First order of business is the consent agenda. You can see that that's handled as a single block. I would entertain a motion in favor of accepting the consent agenda items.
I make a motion to. Go ahead, Sarah. I make a motion to accept consent agenda.
Okay. Any comments, particularly on the minutes, which tends to be what gets discussion if there is any.
There are a couple of small typos that I will send to Casey, but I will second that.
Okay, good. I sent my comments into Casey a while ago, so I think what you're seeing should reflect that. And they are also minor. Not seeing anybody jumping in to ask to say anything else. I will do a roll call vote. Marguerite, are you in favor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Donna? Donna, are you voting in favor of the consent agenda? Take yourself off mute. Okay.
Yes, yes. I'm trying to do this on the phone.
It's not easy. And so that would be unopposed. That is passed. No physical presence of the warrant. Charlotte, remind our viewers what that means.
The warrant is the book purchases, and we do not need the trustees to actually sign that at the meeting because we're virtual.
Thank you. Correspondence? Any correspondence?
There is no correspondence. I have not received any budget materials from the town or anything from Capital Outlay, or which is what I normally would be talking about. But we did in September receive a thank you that I found on my desk with my October materials, and I forgot to include it. And it was a thank you from Michelle DeGrazio for the generous gift in recognition of her 50 years at the library, in the librarians' corner. And she appreciated the sincerity of the notes in the card, and she says, "It has been a privilege being able to engage with many nice townspeople in Norwood." So I just wanted to let you know that she had sent that to the board.
And we can see Donna.
Ah, we can? Oh, there she is. You probably need to shut off the other.
Looks good.
Maybe shut off the other one.
She might end up with an echo if she doesn't. But anyway.
You have the other one for now, at least.
Okay, good.
Okay, while we're multitasking, while we're sorting out the screens, and I'd like to take the next item out of order, which is number five, item F, Personnel Report and Director Search. And for that, I'd like to have the discussion led by our consultant Bernie Lynch, and I will turn the meeting over to him.
Again, good evening. Happy to be here tonight. As I noted, it's an exciting night where we were able to present to the trustees the three finalists that we have for the director position. Certainly, big shoes to fill in taking over from Charlotte and the tremendous job that she's done for the town of Norwood and for the Memorial Library. But, you know, by way of background, we began this search a couple of months ago. We spoke to all of the trustees and a number of staff people to get an understanding of the needs of the library, the desires of the library in terms of the attributes that they were looking for from the next director. And we went out and we did our recruiting, we did our search, and we ended up with 25 applicants. I think we had a number of very strong applicants. The screening committee, which consisted of Marguerite Cummings, who served as chair, Sarah Beggs, George Michael, and Joe Greeley and Mark Ryan, all worked hard in going through all of the resumes and narrowing the search down to five people that we interviewed. And out of that came the decision to bring forward to you tonight the three names that we have. And all of the trustees have the packet of information that we've assembled, which includes the resumes, the cover letters, as well as the references that we received. We did background checks on each one of the candidates, and they all come with very positive reviews. And then we spoke to their references and again echoed those positive reviews, but also gave us a sense of the type of workers that they are, the type of leaders that they are, and the strengths that they would bring to the position. So we've presented those to the board so that you have that sense as we go into the interviews and you make your decision. I'm not sure how much word has gotten out about who the candidates are, but if I could, in alphabetical order, the first candidate that is being presented to you is Clayton Cheever. Clayton is currently the Assistant Director for the Crane, Thomas Crane Public Library in Quincy. He's been there for about seven years now. Prior to that, he served in a couple of different capacities with the Boston Public Library for about five years. And prior to that, he was with the Watertown Free Public Library as the supervisor of technical services. So he has a good 15-year experience with public libraries. He has a bachelor's degree from Vassar in geography and a master's degree in library and information science from Simmons College. And he's our first candidate that we're bringing forward alphabetically. The second candidate is Peter Strazero. Peter is currently the Director of the Town of Belmont Public Library. He's been there for a little over five years. Prior to that, he served as the Director of the Winter Public Library Museum. That was only about a year and a half. But they spoke very highly of his time there and the opportunity that Belmont presented. And then we had, he also spent his time at the Situage Town Library for two years. He has his bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and that's in communications and, I believe, sociology. Excuse me, philosophy and communications. And he too has his master's degree in library and information science in Simmons College. So he's your second candidate. And then your third candidate is Jamie Viveros. Jamie is currently the Director of the Lakefield Public Library. Again, a tenure there of about five years. Prior to that, she served for roughly a year with the Sales Library Network as the Member Services Director or Member Services Librarian. Prior to that, she served as the Director of the Russell Memorial Library in Cushinget, and she was there for about eight years. And so she has her bachelor's degree from, BA in foreign languages from Stonehill, and also a master's degree in library and information science from Simmons. So those are your three candidates. They bring forward skills that the committee felt were applicable and relevant to the town of Norwood and the Memorial Public Library. And I think that we have three members of the committee here. If they'd like to weigh in and give their thoughts as to how they felt about the process, not necessarily a choice here, but if they want to comment on the process that we used and how they felt that all went. Marguerite, you've never been at a loss for comments before, so you've got to throw me.
I'm waiting to see what Sarah and George has to say so that I don't start yakking.
Well, okay, I can go first. That's fine. Now, I think the process was enlightening, and I think that I enjoyed the fact that we spent so much time before gathering the interviews, you know, kind of outlining the framework of what skills this individual should have as far as, you know, all the different facets that would be important for this person to be able to fill out. And I thought that aspect of it was extremely helpful for me, having never hired anyone outside of my own profession. It's often hard to really fully grasp what someone's role is. And by, you know, being able to listen to and hear the input of all the different shareholders in this process, the staff of the library, the town, patrons, was very helpful for me. And then as we went through it, it was quite interesting to read these individuals' resumes, many of them. And, you know, it was helpful also to be able to discuss it and really, you know, be able to wrap my, at least my head around who these people were. And it helped make a decision, at least to see where we were. So I don't know what you felt about it, Sarah.
I felt that we worked very well as a committee together. Were able to have very open and honest dialogue about the different candidates. And I feel that when the decision was made at the end of the day to put forward the three candidates that we were putting forward as our strongest choices, that everyone was comfortable with the decision that we had come to.
Marguerite?
I just would like to say that, you know, Bernie, I think you did a fantastic job getting everything together for us. Certainly, we wouldn't have been able to do all that in this timeframe. The first 25 applicants, we would never have been able to get through those so quickly. You prepared all the paperwork for us and gave us all of the data very smoothly, very succinctly. And everybody's was, you know, right in a row so that we could compare them very quickly. And having Joe Greeley and Mark Ryan on the committee was a bonus to us. They were dynamic in their commitment, in their contributions. And they helped us to look a little bit beyond what we were looking for. They brought their own way of looking at things, and that helped us to smooth things out. When we were looking at things, they would say, "Well," and they would often say, "You know, this is what we saw in the library when we were in the library, and this is what we would like to continue," or "This is how we see the applicants interacting with the..." into play, and that was great. And I thought all the members on the committee took their job very seriously, kept the confidentiality, and it was an honor to be working with all of the members. And I think that the applicants brought their best foot forward when they came for the interviews. But again, Bernie, hats off to you.
Thank you. As I said earlier, it's a great committee. It was really a pleasure to work with the group in the preparations and then the actual interviews. It was just a great dialogue with all of the candidates. Everyone weighed in, as Marguerite said, and participated. So I thought the process was great. So, and I'm thrilled that I think we have really three strong but distinct candidates for you to choose from. And so, which I guess leads us to the next topic, which is, where do we go from here? You have to make a decision as to who to pick. And what I would suggest, and this is something that, you know, I've used in other communities, and in fact, Charlotte and I had spoken about this ahead of tonight, is sort of whether we could line this up, and I think this would work well, is what I recommend is that we reach out to the candidates after tonight and give them the opportunity to come visit the library as a potential director. Get a tour of the library, be able to walk around, see the library, understand the space issues, the program issues, the collection. Have an opportunity to meet staff and have the staff have an opportunity to meet them. And try to do that over the course of the next week, week and a half, I guess I would say, because we have Thanksgiving coming up. So the end of this week and the beginning of next would probably be the most likely time. And then schedule a period of time, if we can work this out with the trustees, the board, is to do the interviews the first week of December, if that would be possible. The one challenge that I have that week is almost every late afternoon and evening is full for me. So I don't know the availability to do something during the day, if that would be possible. If not, then I guess I would propose that we try to do something the following week.
Sarah, you have a question?
Are you referring to the week of December 7th or the week that starts with November 30th?
The week that I am tied up every evening is the week of November 30th. And I have more availability on the evenings of the week of the 7th. But again, it's, you know, I want to work with the trustees to what makes sense for you. Is a daytime meeting something that's possible for people? We'd need about, probably, if we're just doing the interviews, we'd need about three hours. If we're doing the interviews and a decision, and I might suggest you want to hold off on making a decision to have an opportunity to step back and think about what you see and hear. Then we'd need the three, and then maybe schedule another time to come together and make a decision.
Bernie, are you imagining that the six of us would be all together interviewing a candidate?
That's what I was imagining, but, you know, there's different, we have some different options we could do on that. There's ways that we could do some one-on-ones. What are the thoughts that you as members have?
Marguerite, just for a second, I think that as a committee, as the search committee, being in the room together and hearing other people's questions and getting the answers was very fruitful. Being one-on-one, you only hear the answers to your questions. But if you're only going to have, like, if there's six of us and we have an hour, each one's going to have, whatever that is, 10 minutes. I think using the whole hour and getting an hour's worth of information is better than getting 10 minutes at a time. That's just my opinion.
I think that's a great point, Marguerite.
Are there any of the trustees who would argue for the opposite approach from Marguerite's? Donna, you want to speak?
Well, I was wondering, oh, God, the echo. I agree with Marguerite, but I think that, I'm asking if we're going to all meet together in person or on Zoom?
We've been doing, as you might expect, the screening committee did theirs completely by Zoom, and we, in most communities, have been doing things by Zoom or go-to-meeting. There are some cases where people have come together. The problem is when you come together now in a room, there is a requirement to be masked. And so kind of lose something with that. But, you know, you kind of lose something either way. If you're not seeing the body language that you might see if you were in person, but at the same time, if they're masked, you're not seeing any facial expressions, and it makes the conversation a little bit more difficult.
I would add that, I think, with the trend that we're seeing in COVID severity and the reaction of the state government and health authorities, we would be tempting fate if we tried to do it in person that they'd even allow us to hold those meetings at that time. In fact, I was a little concerned about your plan to have face-to-face meetings between our current staff and the candidates. And that seems like it might be a little risky, as long as Charlotte and her folks don't think it's too risky. I defer to them. I think I would prefer that we do it by Zoom. And I'm persuaded by Marguerite's point of view, which I haven't heard anyone challenge, that we'll get our best results if the six trustees and each candidate in turn, and Bernie, are on a succession of Zoom meetings. Circling back around to the other point that Sarah and Bernie were dialoguing on, being a retired person, I can meet anytime. But I suspect that for some of us, that's not true. How important is it to any of the folks here that we meet in the evening or we meet in the late afternoon? Donna?
Well, I'm working Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I can meet some evenings, or I could meet Monday and Tuesday earlier in the day.
Okay.
If you can meet, if you can meet Monday and Tuesday in the day, we could do the 30th or the first, if that would work.
Is there anybody who could not do earlier in the day on the 30th or the first? George, are you?
Oh, yeah, no, I can do it. That's fine.
Okay. That sounds like a plan that will work for everybody, Bernie, so.
Okay.
I like the idea of doing it earlier rather than later because we have so much to do in such a compressed period of time.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to say the, what's your choice? Do you want to start with a Monday, or do you want to do it on a Tuesday?
Do you want to send out an email and have people put it in there?
Sure. Do you want to?
That might be easier, yes. But do you want to do it now?
I think it's a matter of what the candidates can do.
I'm going to guess that the candidates will do what you tell them you want to do. So with this much, I think this is enough lead notice that if I got ahold of them this evening or tomorrow morning, I could nail them down for the 30th or the first. And we could start, you know, we could start maybe at 9:30. Does that work for people?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do that at 9:30 on, why don't we try to do it on the, why don't we try to do it on the Tuesday? Does that work?
That would work. I'm just trying to imagine myself in your position that if you start with the 30th and it doesn't work, it's easier to fall back a day to the first than it is back earlier a day. Sarah?
I was just going to say that when we did the initial set of interviews, we as a committee decided the day that all of us could meet. Bernie contacted the candidates and said, "These are the slots that the committee can meet. First come, first served." And five candidates showed up for their meetings, even with us jockeying times a little bit on the go. So I am not as concerned about the difference between the 30th and the first. As I said, when Bernie did it the first time, he said, "This is the day. These are the times," and we had all five.
And Casey will need to post that meeting, right?
Now, and I assume NCM is Norwood Cable Media. Community Media. I assume that they will be broadcasting this as well, perhaps?
Brian, are you there? I think he's just taping, but Casey will let him know. She'll send him an email. Oh, okay.
You're coming through fine, Brian.
No, it'll be.
Zoom meetings in which the trustees will be interviewing the three candidates?
And it's an open, it's an open meeting, Brian.
Can you, can you, can you do it by, I know this could get sensitive here, but can you do it on my Zoom account, or do you need to have it on the go-to-meeting platform that the town is using?
Bernie, I think the town requires go-to-meeting because they tape it as well. Brian, is that, is Brian D. Felice still on?
I am, yes.
Okay, so isn't that a requirement that we do it on go-to-meeting because it's an official town meeting?
I believe so. I can follow up to be absolutely sure, but I believe so.
Okay, all right. It's just the different platforms. So, the, okay, we will work through that. Let me try for the 30th with all the candidates. The concern I had was the Monday after a holiday weekend, a long holiday, that maybe there'd be some challenges that people would have. But let me check on that, and to John's point, if that becomes a problem, then we'll push it back to the first.
Okay.
Um, I personally.
I'm sorry.
It sounded like you were just going to aim for the Tuesday. Is that no longer accurate?
I changed my mind.
Would you go with November?
Well, I have a, the Monday, I would prefer to actually have lunch with my family because it's one of my kids' birthdays, but that's neither here nor there.
Tuesday it is. Tuesday it is.
Sorry.
That's all right.
December 1st.
December 1st.
All right.
All right.
Was, have arrangements been made for one of the staff members to meet with all three candidates yet?
I think Bernie's going to talk about that.
Okay, good.
That, did you have the staff meet with the, yes, the, when the candidates come for their tour of the building, they would have an opportunity to meet with the staff at that time?
Officially or just, you know, hello, how are you? This is where we keep the large print books? I mean, are they going to be able to sit down, talk to them, sort of have an interview process with them? I would like them to have a chance to meet them.
Okay. All right.
At least one, at least one staff member have a chance to sit down and have a discussion with each one of them during their period of time going through the building.
Okay, just so I understand, would you say one, one staff person?
At least one.
Okay. Okay.
The same person each time.
So there, there would be two options. One would be that the person would spend quite a bit of time, like an hour, walking through the building, either, probably in the afternoon would be best, although in the morning, they would see more activity because they would see the open library. In the afternoon, of course, everyone is just at their, is at their desk working. The circulation department's doing curbside. So there would be a definite opportunity for that person to spend a minute or two or three or whatever. The other option would be for us to have an actual meeting, staff meeting, for instance, in the reading room, and everyone come to that. But I, I do think it would be, it would be harder on everybody because I think the candidate would be reluctant to take too much time, whereas it more, might be more of a personal approach if they're at somebody's desk and it's a one-on-one. Does that sound like something that you would want?
Yeah.
Let me throw on another couple.
Because we had spoken about that when we were talking initially, someone from the town, someone from the community, and someone from the, within the library, not to be on the committee, but someone from the library to also talk to the final candidates.
Yeah. And I tried to, that was what my thought was earlier when I proposed that they spend, and this is similar to what we've done in other communities with library director searches. They come, they see the library, they get to see the people in their workplace, and they get to talk. And it isn't just a sort of a, hey, how are you? It's an opportunity to interact.
And then that person could go back and report to the other.
Well, I've been visiting, I've been visiting multiple people being able to have some, some time like that with the person.
Yes, but often that just, that kind of devolves into pleasant small talk, pleasantries. How are you? Where are you from? Whatever, you know?
Let me jump in because I think there's a couple of points that aren't clear and people are working off different assumptions. One approach to whatever this format is, is that it's there to allow the candidates to learn about the staff and the library. Another independent, not incompatible, is that it's there for the staff and to learn about the candidates. And Marguerite, it sounded to me like she was setting up one or more staff people, giving what amounted to formal interview notes that would then be available to the trustees for their consideration along with everything else. And I started from the assumption that the principal value here was an exchange of questions and answers, that each side would be learning something about the library and about the candidates that they didn't already know, but there wouldn't be the notion that the results of that would be transcribed and provided as formal input to the decision-making process.
I don't think it will be. I just think it's, it would be a nice way for the staff to get to know who came to interview. So it's not just somebody walking through the building. Yeah, great, Lydia. I'm sorry, John.
I think this is, this is important to discuss because staff have had a lot of questions about what happens next, and I think they're very curious as to whether they'll have an opportunity to meet the candidates, for one thing, but also whether they'll be able to give feedback to the committee after potentially meeting the candidates.
Well, if I could, just one recommend, a couple, couple points on that. One, logistically, I do have a, I do have a concern of the idea of a formal report to the trustees.
No, I didn't mean to the trustees. I meant to each other.
Yeah, right. Okay, so.
Lydia, is, which did you mean? Lydia, did you mean a formal report to the, to the screening committee or the trustees, or did you mean a report back to your other staff colleagues?
I meant a, a report or in any format, whether they'd have a chance to, I think they, they want to know if they'll have any say in the decision. So whether they will be able to provide feedback to the, the trustees, they, in particular, about their thoughts if they, if they do have an opportunity to ask questions and have any kind of meeting or interview.
Yeah.
And the answer might be no.
Well, no, I think, and I think we could work, there's different ways that communities have dealt with, have handled this, to gain as much input as possible. The only thing I always worry about, and it, it becomes a real challenge to a community when essentially there's a vote of the staff, something like that. That, that doesn't, that doesn't work well. But feedback of, oh, I like, you know, we liked this and we like that, but in the form of a formal report that, you know, that, keep in mind, this, these are public records. All right, and that's, that's, that can create some issues from a variety of standpoints. Liability, as well as, you know, sort of reputation of the system. So we just have to be cautious with that. What I was going to suggest is there's a couple different ways we could do this, because we want the process to be one that everyone feels good about. What we could do, I know we just set the first as a date, but another option I'll put out on the table is we could have the staff, we could have the candidates come during, to visit during the time we spoke of. Then during the week of the 30th, what we've done, I'm doing one Friday morning in the town, is we're having candidates come by Zoom, meet with the candidates. They just log in, they ask questions, and they get their answers, and they get a sense of who the candidates are. And then if they choose to, you know, make a, reach out to trustees if they like, or if trustees want to reach back, something like that, again, I would caution you against the notion of a vote of some sort. But, but yeah, I think that, you know, you could do something like that, and then the board could do its interviews the following week on the 7th or the 8th. How does that sound?
Let me do the first one, but not necessarily the only one to react to what you suggested, Bernie. Lydia, I don't think there's a way in which we arrange things so that the staff have a formal role in the decision. And one of the things that could happen is, if that happened, is you get the staff comes out in favor of one candidate, the trustees come out in favor of a second candidate, and Tony Mizuko, who has the final choice, comes out in favor of a third candidate. So that whoever comes in knows they've already got important people who would rather they weren't there. And that's an awfully large hill to climb over for anyone who gets selected. However, I'm thinking that what we could do, Bernie, is if you set it up so that the staff has an opportunity to ask questions and give answers back and forth on tape with the different candidates, and the trustees have a chance to look at the tapes and take from that what they see there helps to provide input. It's not an official staff opinion, but they may well have asked questions that nobody from the trustees thought to ask, and they may have answers that are more illuminating or differently illuminating. Is that something that, and I'm looking also at Charlotte, who knows the legalities and some of the pros and cons of different approaches, would that provide some degree of satisfaction of everybody's interests? And I'll ask Charlotte first and then Bernie.
Well, I don't think there are any illegalities for that, Bernie. You can tell me if you think so. It's not, you know, it doesn't have to be a posted open meeting or, or anything like that because it's, it's a staff meeting with a candidate. So it could certainly be done. I think, Lydia, correct me if I'm wrong, do you think people would feel very comfortable asking questions on Zoom? I, I know that a lot of times the Zoom meetings, people are very, very quiet, and then you end up having these, you know, real pregnant pauses, and I don't want that to be uncomfortable for anybody.
Right. I think that there are a lot of staff members who would not be comfortable being filmed, but there are a handful who would definitely participate. And I think that appreciate the, the explanation that you gave, Don, and the understanding that there are some problems with giving feedback in that it would be public of feedback, and I think that would dissuade some people from, you know, wanting to, to give their two cents.
Let me, let me add a suggestion then to address the last point Charlotte made, which is you're hooking this on to a staff meeting, but it's at the end of the staff meeting, and attendance at the part that involves talking to the candidates is purely voluntary. So if there's anybody who's nervous about being in that situation, especially if they're mainly going to be like a potted plant, wouldn't have to be there. But the ones who already know that they have questions to ask and want to be there, they could be there.
And if I, if I may, John, you, you mentioned the recording. We've actually done that. We, in the town of Welffley and, I believe Truro, we actually, actually, I guess it's just Truro, we recorded the meetings with the staff, with the department heads, meeting with the town manager applicants. And the trustees, in that case, the select board, watched it afterwards to get a feel for the interaction. If you do that, to Lydia's point, there may be people that don't want to go on record with something, but they'd be curious to sit and watch the interaction themselves, or have a question, someone else might ask a question that addresses their concerns. Again, we've, we've used this approach. As I say, we're doing it this, this Friday in Kingston, where we're going to have people, staff people, meeting with candidates to ask questions. Some will ask, some will just watch, and you, you get that interaction that takes place.
This is happening before the interviews, correct?
That's my, that's my thought, is that that would happen before the interviews.
Yeah. Okay. My concern is that we, if we push this too far into December, that, as my experience has been, there's always a little bit of negotiation that goes on, and there can be a week or two before an offer is actually accepted, and then the person has to give 30 days' notice. And I think it would be terrific if the person, if the new director did start in the middle of January. So I'd just like to throw that out there, that adding all of these components is, you know, I would hate to see it, kick it down the, the road a little bit. So if we could do something in the next couple days, as, as far as I know, when you're applying to be a director, you make yourself available when they want you. There's no, there's usually no negotiation with that. So I would think that they would be able, maybe to come in, there are three days this week, and there are two days at the beginning of next week before Wednesday of the holiday. So I would think that people would be able to come in and do that, and then the interviews could actually still go off on December 1st.
Right. What we.
I just want to say that, you know, my intent was not to, I have, you know, give an opening to the staff about what the applicant is like, but also to give the applicant a chance to ask questions about the library that, you know, we were not able to answer for him or her, you know, to give them some insight into the inner workings of the library that they may have questions about. You know, a, a, a one-hour walkthrough might not be able to answer those, but, you know, having an opportunity, if you even pick one person to do the walkthrough with that, you might get somebody to, to, if you assign somebody to do the walkthrough, somebody from the library to do the walkthrough with each one of those, pick somebody for each one, that might just suffice. They can meet everybody, and they'll have somebody that they can turn to and ask the questions. That might just do it. And then if you want to have a little staff meeting afterwards, fine, but somebody that they can feel they're comfortable with, they can ask questions, and that staff person would become, feel comfortable that they have a relationship for that one hour. It doesn't have to be anything formal. That was, that was the way I was looking at it. And, and then I thought that person during that one hour time could then go back and tell people what he or she found during that time that they had to spend with that person. That won't cut into any extra time in December. But that's, that was my feeling about it. I wasn't trying to prolong things or, or make a new step in the process. I was just trying to give.
There might be.
Yeah, the applicant's an avenue and the staff an avenue, so they can both get to know each other.
Yeah, and there, there might be a way to do this on that day. You know, I understand what you're saying about just one person, but maybe there could be just a, a short period during that tour where, you know, three or four people in a room.
Yeah.
Putting the higher staff in the room, the, the reading room, could probably be too challenging under current conditions. But if you had a three or four staff people, they could, you know, meet this individual, ask some questions, and be able to report back to the rest of the staff, and be, as to Marguerite, to your point, be a resource for the candidate to understand, to be able to ask questions, so that they.
Lydia?
Yeah, I think maybe if staff had the opportunity to submit suggested questions, either to a fellow staff member or to the board, that appreciate some way to give their, their input about what's important to them.
Yeah, Lydia, along those lines, if, you know, as we, that's something we haven't spoken of yet, but, you know, when we get into the, the interviews, if there are questions that the staff would like to have asked, by all means, send them along, and, you know, we'll kind of work those in to the, to that. But if there's, or they could do it during the interaction of the staff and the candidate during those tours that they take.
I, I did make that, put that offer out there, and some staff members did take, take me up on that and gave me questions to ask, and I, I worked some of them into the initial interviews, so it helped me to know what the staff was looking for. So yes, I think that's a great idea, Lydia. it helped me to know what the staff was looking for. So yes, I think that's a great idea, Lydia. Maybe more people would do, would take advantage of that.
Let me take a a pass at trying to sum up where I think we are and what remains to be clarified. Um, I think we're, we've got a target range of a few dates at which time the interaction between the candidates and the staff will take place. But the details about how and in what sequence to be worked out by Bernie and Charlotte, who I think know uh what everybody here is saying they'd like to see happen and can easily uh address those uh to the extent that's feasible. And then uh we will be having trustee interviews by Zoom or equivalent with the candidate on December the 1st. And then, if I'm right, after that, there's the interview of candidates with Tony Mizuko. I'm not sure when and how that happens. Or even happens.
I've spoken to Tony about that. What he's looking, what he's asked the uh, the boy to do is to do their interviews and uh make a recommendation to him as to who they would like.
Okay, that that shortens the process. So what what's left to do in a, in a short period of time is we've got to take all the input we've got as of December 1st and come down with our recommendation. Now, the three members who were on the screening committee have some experience in digesting input down to a set of choices. I don't imagine you use numerical ratings or any of that sort of thing, more like open conversation. Uh, so what I'm hoping is perhaps uh the three experienced people might guide the rest of us in the meeting we have, which could be the end of the week of the December 1st, to come up with our choices. Does that sound doable? Because I've had my eye on on what Charlotte rightly said, which is, we've got to have enough time in there to uh do negotiations, make arrangements, allow them to give adequate notice to their employer and still get them in place in the middle of January.
And don't forget, you have to uh coordinate with with Molly Keen for um, I believe, for an offer letter, uh, official offer letter from the town.
Right. So I think if you, if we shoot for that, if we do the first and then what we need to do is we need to find time uh on um either the second or the third. Um, and I apologize being a a challenge to you on this, but just my, my schedule, I could do probably something like this time on the second. That might be too quick for you. Uh, the third becomes more problematic because I can do it. Um, I I have a 6:30 that night. Um, that I'm not sure how long that's going to run, so. Uh, but we could do something on the 7th again, is a possibility.
Do any of the trustees have a preference between the second and the third? If in fact we are ambitious enough to try to to do it that quickly.
That would be in the evening, correct, John?
I believe so. Is that right, Bernie?
Well, the second I can do the evening, the the third I cannot do the evening. Um, and I know that's a problem for Donna.
Okay. I'm looking to see if any of my fellow trustees want to weigh in with preferences or things to avoid in that range. I'm seeing them shaking heads. Donna?
Well, the 7th is a Monday and I would be available during the day.
Yep.
I'd like to get it done before the week of the 7th in order that we have enough lead time in case any of the subsequent steps take longer than we expect them to.
Do you, do you think we could do it? Do you think you'd be able to do it on the 2nd?
Well, I thought, I thought you wanted more time to think about it than
A day. Right.
Well, if not doing the 2nd meet the 7th, I'd rather have the five days than the extra time to think about it. That's just me.
George? Um, well, it, my only concern is the timeline with everything that has to occur. Um, and if that's going to give enough time um uh for everything else to transpire after that, I mean, but I agree with you, John, on that point. Uh, because I know when, just during the initial search, trying to whittle it down to these three candidates, um, we got to a point where, um, you know, you're, you're trying to compare apples to oranges and think of things. And I think having the extra component of, uh, perhaps, you know, the input of the library staff is going to change uh viewpoints um that we may hold currently, um, as well as new questions that come up from the other board members that weren't part of that initial process. So um, if we can do it time-wise, if that, if it's not going to threaten getting a candidate in place and time, you know, a hire in place and time, then I'm, I'm all for taking the time to to think it through carefully.
Is that on the 7th? George had an argument in favor of the 7th.
Yes, definitely.
And we've lost Charlotte.
Oh, I don't have to vote. I don't vote, though. Sorry. I'm not, you haven't lost me. I'm right here.
Oh, I I know you don't vote, but I think you have been the most consistent spokesperson for the needs of the schedule, the larger schedule. And that's what
I think if you meet on the 7th and you give Molly a heads up so that she can have um an offer letter together. Um, and then the offer letter can get to the, to the candidate within a day. Um, we have seen candidates uh have an issue with uh the fact that they uh do not have health benefits for three months in Norwood, and that's pretty strict. Um, as Lydia will attest to when she started, it was, you know, it it has been an issue. And so sometimes there's been some negotiation. I've found that there can be, you know, days worth of negotiation. So you want to be able to work that in. That's all that I'm saying. You would love, I, you would love to have a candidate who signs an offer on the 15th of December, knowing that they have, um, that they're going to give four weeks' notice.
Do you think it's okay to just give 30 days over the holidays and then expect the town that you're working for to say, well, that's all right. 30 days is good enough for me, you know, when you're in the director's room?
30 days is pretty standard.
Okay.
Lydia, would you say so from your experience, 30 days being pretty standard for notice?
I can't imagine if you left with only 30 days. But um, I mean, I think it's, it's on paper. It's what's acceptable. But at this point, um, at this point, the the three candidates will be, um, they'll be giving their employers a heads up. Um, you know, I guess now that their names are public, so.
Ah, good point.
I, I, I would, I think, I think 30 days is is pretty
Pretty standard these, yeah.
But there's a point of confusion on the schedule that that I need help on. You're talking, Charlotte, you're talking as if, once we've made our choice, Molly can have the letter out the next day. But isn't there an intervening event where we pass our choice to Tony?
Right.
And you don't know quite what, what he will want to be able to do. But as a minimum, I would think that's another day.
Well, I think Tony, from what I just heard from Bernie, Tony is pretty much going to take the recommendation of the board. Am I wrong, Bernie?
I, I, I think that's, that's the likely scenario, but that's what, yeah, I think that he's looking for that. And when we spoke yesterday, that, or the other day, he, he, that's what he mentioned, uh, because I was giving him a status and uh uh, you know, I I guess he has the the ability to say, thank you, but no. Uh, but I think that um, yeah, I think if we can, if we can shoot for the 7th and, you know, hopefully have the person, I mean, it, you know, might, it might push it a day or two. I don't know. But you'd still be looking at the middle of January to have someone on board.
And, you know, it is, I I think it's doable. And I think if we give Molly and and Tony a heads up, that that's what the schedule is.
Yep.
And that they're around and that they're available and that they know that that's what's coming. I think that would
And then they, and I, and I can, we can talk to Tony and see if, uh, you know, you know, one, make sure that uh I'm correct in the way I've described that, and I hope I am. Uh, and then, um, you know, maybe he, after you do your interviews, maybe he will reach out to the candidates himself and do some discussion with each one, um, by phone or Zoom or whatever. And then it's wait for your recommendation.
There's a, uh, you, I don't know whether this would help or or not, but if Tony gets this and and he's only seen the, the resumes and, you know, the package that you sent at this point and and he's surprised and concerned at the choice we made, but we might be able to address that if he just talks to me or some group of the board, ask questions about, well, why did you pick this person and were you not concerned about such and such? And uh, as opposed to formal meetings. Sarah, you've got a comment?
I was just going to ask um in terms of if we are going to meet on the 7th, if it would be possible for us to do that same 9:30 in the morning so that we do our deliberations and we're able to submit our recommendation as early in the day as possible so that we can get this ball moving.
Yes, I think that's doable.
Okay, good idea.
Why don't we, why don't we work with, why don't we, uh, Charlotte, we'll, we'll work with Tony and uh and we'll also work on scheduling the finalists to get out to the library and meet the, see the library, meet the staff.
Yep.
And make sure Casey has the information she needs to know what to post.
Right.
Yeah. And uh Well, the four of us will meet tomorrow, Bernie, maybe by Zoom very quickly. Lydia, Casey, me, you, and we'll get this all wrapped up.
Right. Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, I will, um, I'll reach out to everyone tomorrow morning. Is that work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Let's do that.
Okay.
I think we, I think we have a plan.
Anything else on this topic for the good of the order?
I think
Seen none. Uh, thank you, Bernie, and everybody else who chimed in. And uh, we'll go back to the regular order of the agenda, which is old business.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you, Bernie.
See you soon. Uh, future reopening services, uh, Charlotte?
Well, we had a town uh managers meeting this morning and Segal is waiting for Thursday because Thursday is when the governor puts out his um new recommendations for either opening or closing up further. Um, I expect after the news yesterday that Maine has um put restrictions on travel from Massachusetts and other states, and that other states are doing this, and also looking at the spike. Um, we will not be offering any further um services at this point. And it may be the town managers were told to, um, if the word came out that we would be working from home, that any department would be working from home, everybody needs to be prepared to be working from home. Everyone at the library, I think, would be prepared for that. So um, I am going to talk to the staff tomorrow about that. Um, to make sure that everybody knows that they need to go back, they need to go back to what they were doing before. And Tony did say that anyone who cannot work from home um, because their job really does not allow it, needs to be available to work um at the call center or um at other positions in the town. So I need to talk to the staff about that as well. Um, we, we're only making one change, and the change we're making right now, if everything stays the same, is that um people coming into the library, we've encouraged people to put their books in the book drop, but they're walking in from their cars and they're bringing their materials in. And we've been having them put it on a cart so that nobody else touches it. And then the end of the day, that cart goes up to quarantine or the articles on that cart go up to quarantine. Personally, I feel the cart is in the way. Um, people are bringing in more materials, so they talked about putting another cart. And uh, there were, the suggestion by some of the staff was that people, that the um patrons could start using the interior book drop. So we're going to, I'm going to let Segal know that we've made a change to our um, our plan and that patrons will put their materials in the book drop at the circulation desk. And circulation staff will use gloves and uh wear masks and put those on a cart to go up to be quarantined. Um, and that's the only change that we're, that we're making uh currently.
Charlotte, one question for you. Well, if you were making the choice and it was already 30 degrees out with snow on the ground, would you make the same choice or would you be saying, you've got to use that outdoor drop? There's really no other alternative.
I just don't see that it's really necessary. Uh, you know, our, from what we've read and from what Segal has recommended, the virus is not being passed by materials. It's being passed by respiratory droplets. So therefore, we're just taking the extra precaution. It makes everybody feel good for us to be quarantining those materials. Um, and I do not think it is right for, um, you know, a lot of our patrons are 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 elderly um for them to park right outside the door and have to traipse all the way up the sidewalk where, you know, sometimes there can be, especially with snow and ice, a problem, or rain, um, to send them up to the book drop. I think the interior book drop is perfectly fine. And I think most of my key leadership team um believe the same. So we will be, that's the change that we will be making. And especially if we stay through the winter. We don't want to be sending people up to that book drop. People, some people have a hard time from the seat of their car. You know, if they're a smaller person, um, reaching up and getting those books into the book drop. And I think making that one trip into the library. Um, or curbside, we've also allowed, Lydia, right, we've allowed them to put them down, curbside. I'm not quite sure what happens with curbside when they're returning.
I think curbside, they're told to put them in the um outdoor book drop. And I would, I would add, the part of the rationale was that uh we're seeing patrons um browsing the return cart and touching things and taking things from it. So this would eliminate that problem.
It'd go right into that interior book drop and be, and be put in there. Um, so that's the only change we're making with reopening at this point in time. And I will keep you posted if I get anything, um, if Segal gets anything from the governor, um, she'll let all of us know. And I will let you know.
Okay, good. Uh, noise in the library and team behavior?
Well, there aren't a lot of teens in the library, um, and there's very little noise, especially in the afternoon when we're closed. It's, it's so quiet. It's, it's a little bit eerie. So, um, there is none, no, nothing to worry about.
So the sources of noise work for you.
Yeah. And and on that note, I will say that our clock irons have been gone for over a year now. Um, Casey has been calling and calling and calling. And today, his voice mailbox is is totally full. So
I need contact from Facebook, Charlotte. We're getting a call tomorrow.
You're getting a call from him tomorrow?
Yes.
Yay, because we really miss our clock. So uh, we're hoping for some, a little bit of noise from the clock. We're hoping and reinstall it. We were a little worried when Casey couldn't find his website anymore and his voice mailbox was full. Um, but anyway, she, she's done some sleuthing work and she Um, but anyway, she, she's done some sleuthing work and she figured, she found out he's on Facebook, so. We're hoping to get our clock working again.
Anger's cross.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so now we're up to the reports. Uh, maybe just go through them as much time as, little as you.
Yeah, I, I won't, uh, the library budget, you know, here it is, the end of October, it, which is what the budget was, and we're, we're right on track for everything. I will say that the salaries, um, look good because we are not open on Sundays. We're saving a little money that way. We have a big buyout for the four people who, um, are leaving the library this, um, this year. So, but it should be taken care of by some of the surpluses. So I'm feeling very comfortable about that now. Um, and everything else, uh, looks good. We do have a problem in that, um, our, well, Casey's trying to get to the bottom of our telephone bills because our phone bills, that they zeroed out that budget thinking that we would have none because we went to VoIP, uh, and they are now coming in higher than ever. And we just can't quite figure it out in Casey's working, trying to figure, um, trying to get Kathy Carney to sort of figure out what's going on with our phone bills. Um, and we'll, um, but that, that'll be fine because our utilities, looks like our utilities are going to come in less, um, significantly less, or at least we'll make up for that. So we'll be fine paying it this year, we just need to get it in the budget for next year. Everything else looks good. Lydia's keeping us on track for materials, um, and all of our, you know, all of our, um, services that we've added this year and whatnot, so. Uh, the budget looks on track, and I will be giving you a, a budget update in the very beginning of January to let you know where we are, which is what I always do anyway.
Okay. Strategic plan.
So, that's you, John?
Did you have a chance to chat with, uh, our preferred consultant about his availability?
I haven't. I, I did put a, you know, talked briefly just one, one time, it's sort of hinted at it. Um, but I think, I think a, a formal proposal needs to go out. But we don't have to worry about going out to bid because, um, I don't think that'll be an issue.
Okay, good. Um, I think we said we were going to formalize who's on the committee to do strategic plan at this meeting?
Uh.
At the last set of minutes? Casey, do you remember that?
I put it on the agenda because we did say we were gonna, uh, visit, revisit it, but I wasn't sure if, um, that meant a committee or. You, you were talking about the members of the board, John?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I would say at least two members of the board need to, need to, um, this would be a project, John, that you would start as chair and that the next chair would finish.
Well, luckily, we don't need a GSA declaration to get our possible future chair involved. Just a good crystal ball. Um, let me propose then that the, uh, because the, uh, the committee, the miscellaneous committee that Donna and Leah are on has, has been a central participant in it. Suppose the group is myself and Margarita and Donna. Donna, are you interested in being part of the strategic plan work?
Yes.
And Margarita as the presumptive next chair? Think the blood got in her face.
I think that would be great, and then, uh, maybe the three of you could get together and decide how you want to formally get a consultant involved, um, probably before February, or, you know, or around there. And then with a six-month schedule, get it filed by October of, uh, two thousand twenty-one. And the new director would be involved.
Yeah, and if we, uh, if we at least wait to initiate that formally until after we complete the search for the new director, we'll have a couple of important pieces of information in our hands, and our preferred consultant will not be tied up with current work. It might be distracting him from future work. Um, I will accept a motion then for a committee to consist of, uh, myself, Margarita, and Donna to be the committee for the plan from the board. Anybody want to make such a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, George. Second?
I'll second.
There are seconds? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call. I'll do it in order of my frames here. George, you're first.
Oh, what are we voting? Aye, and agreement?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Margarita? She's nodding, and, uh, and I vote yes, so that's unanimous. Um, and we will have some discussions, uh, before the next board meeting, I suspect, to, uh, see if we are doing what we should be doing, when we should be doing it. Um, and, uh, perhaps that material, Charlotte, that you and I worked up in the proposed schedule, uh, if, I don't think everybody, so if Casey, Casey could send that to Margarita and Donna, um, we'll, we'll have a frame from which team to act.
Okay. Sounds good. Excellent.
Okay.
Donna, Donna has a question?
Go ahead, Donna.
Um, John, I missed every other word that you said.
It's amazing how deep it's made though, right?
What?
It's amazing how much it's made with half the word.
The past thing, and then I miss it, yeah.
You're, you're, you're on the committee, you're going to be getting some material from Kate, uh, and, uh, three of us, you, Margarita, and myself, will be in touch.
Sorry, John, what, um, what information do you need me to send to Margarita and Donna?
Casey, I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're up to Friends of the Library. They had an event recently. How'd that go?
Yes, they, yeah, they had that event at the Chateau, um, the fundraiser. I, I don't know how much they, um, how many people took advantage of it or what was raised, but that was very good. While I went in to pick up my, um, uh, dinner, um, Vicky from, uh, Reference was in there, so we were both in there. And, uh, uh, the, uh.
Staff, staff, a lot of the library staff went in at lunchtime. And, uh, I, I went in at five thirty and one of our staff members was coming down the steps. So I'm hoping that, I'm hoping it was a good fundraiser for them.
Right. And, um, Carla, I saw that you had the, um, I at least saw on Instagram and Facebook that Ted, uh, uh, Ryan Stein's, uh, talk on, uh, program on twelve eight was, is being dispersed, and hopefully we'll get a lot of people in there for that. The friends are supporting that. And Nicole Guerra Kuhn, uh, is, um, working with the, um, friends, uh, for the town read. I don't know what book they're, um, going to pick up, but, um, she has asked for funding for the books once they decide on, um, a subject. And I think they're going to be talking, I'm sure they're going to be talking to the librarians about what to pick. And so that's underway too. And, uh, so those are the three things that I have to report.
I'll be presenting a budget, um, through email, um, because the friends aren't meeting, um, and they can improve that budget for the next year. Be a little bit pared down, uh, because they haven't been making the, the, the same money without the book sales. Um, one of the things that we need is hospitality money for the outreach, uh, and, uh, the outreach department so that they can send cards and whatnot to their homebound patrons and whatnot. So, and some programming money. But it'll be a little bit, it'll be less than it has been in other years.
Okay. Um, programming report?
Well, you, you, you've got the publicity report in your packet, and there, everyone's doing just a terrific job. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we hit the statistics, which is in the next, um, it is in new business.
Okay. Uh, maintenance and repair?
We're enjoying our new lighting. Uh, it's almost finished. There are a few left to do, and they'll be telling us, and it wouldn't, would not re, uh, require a closure. Um, so we are amazed at how light some of the areas in the library are. Nobody knew how dark they were until now. The elevator especially is, is a little bit shocking because it's so bright. Um, so, and she's going to be working with townwide facilities, and they've been absolutely wonderful to work with. So I have a lot of, uh, hope that it's going to be much easier on the new director to not have to do, be so intimately involved with the maintenance of the building.
Okay, good. Uh, we did personnel reports, so new business?
I need to, I need to tell you that, um, Liz Reed has been promoted, uh, as of February first. She is promoted to, uh, the Adult Services and Adult and Information Services Department head, and we're absolutely thrilled, um, to have her accept that offer, and she'll be leading that department. And Liz, as you know, is one of our superstars, has a wonderful, um, reputation in the entire network and the, and the state, um, just a real, um, just a stellar librarian. Um, and Dina Delik has been promoted to the position of, uh, Children's, uh, Assistant Children's Librarian, and she and Nicole Guerra Kuhn essentially have the same, the same job now. But Dina, who's the most prolific reader I have ever met in my life, um, and just, uh, just an amazing librarian and who receives her degree in the middle of December, and she will start her position on January first. Um, Dina will be, uh, focusing a little bit more on YA, uh, young adults in our library, which is just, I, we're thrilled to have three professional librarians in our children's department.
Great.
She's graduating from Simmons. So that's, that's all for personnel. We, we have two more. We have to replace Liz and we have to replace Nancy, and that will be happening. We're going to start working on that this week.
Good luck. Uh, statistical report?
Well, you have the statistics in front of you. Um, that was one thing that I had, I had been neglecting to, um, send out because, to you, because we had some pretty terrible months there with zero in pretty, in, in every column. So I wanted you to see that, and I was heartened by the fact that our, um, it looks like our circulation, uh, is, is going to be at, at least fifty percent, which isn't, I mean, here we are in the middle of COVID, and we are managing to get books into the hands of our patrons, and we're managing to send them out and get them out to, um, libraries in the state. Uh, we are one of the biggest lenders right now, uh, mainly because I think that some of the other libraries are dealing with smaller staffs, and they're not sending their materials out for whatever reason. Uh, our streaming is going to be about a hundred percent higher than it was, I think, by the end of the year than it was last year. Um, so if you take a look at some of those statistics, some of them look a little dire, I know. Passports are going to be about a third of what they were last year. Um, we're not making any money, we're not charging for printing. Uh, so we're not making any, any printing money. Um, we're still waiving all fines. Uh, so those numbers are, are way down. Uh, we aren't able to do one-on-one tech appointments, but the programming numbers are terrific. The participants in the children's programs are as high as they were last year because we can have more participants because they're online. So I think that, um, I did an Indian cooking course last night with our adult, uh, in, uh, Adult Services Department, which was tremendous amount of fun. It was my second Indian cooking course, and I had, I had a good time, Jerry and I did. We totally trashed the kitchen, uh, during, um, the, the class, which is only one hour. And, um, I think, I think we're going to see, you know, it doesn't look as bad as we had expected it to be. One interesting thing, if you do look at the report, there are no more remote renews, which was a big number, because that was when people were renewing their materials remotely, going into their account. Now it's automatic renews. So those are included in the circulation, the top circulation number. It's not broken out anymore. Um, so anyway, that, that is interesting. Um, so, um, you take a look at those numbers, and you will have a final report in January. And so you'll see how we did over the course of, uh, twenty, um, twenty twenty. There are many libraries, well, a third of the libraries in Minuteman. We have a meeting tomorrow, a Minuteman membership meeting, but I've seen a lot of emails. It looks like about a third of the Minuteman libraries will not be open at all until, uh, they're, they're not even thinking about anything until January or February, open to the public, but they are doing curbside. So, uh, you know, we, we are just really, um, our patrons just love us. We're safely open, um, knock wood, but we haven't had, uh, cases of COVID. And, um, you know, I, we're all safe, we're all wearing masks, we're all using sanitizer. Even our one-on-one appointments, our notary and passport appointments, we're doing very safely. Um, so I think that, uh, you know, we feel very, very comfortable with where we are. We're very proud of, um, you know, our work. So let's just hope that we don't have to go back home. Because I think there are so many of us, Lydia and I especially, who do not function well at home, would much rather be in the, in the library. So we're kind of hoping that that, this can continue.
Good luck to us all. Last thing I see on new business is Sastavichus Fund, and then I have one other item of my own.
Okay, Kathy Sastavichus got ahold of me. I need to talk to, uh, Town Treasurer. Um, she would, um, like to, um, she would like to give enough money to the Sastavichus Fund to make it, um, a scholarship in perpetuity. And Sarah will remember this because Sarah was on the board when Kathy first came to us back in two thousand and six, I believe it was, or two thousand and five maybe, and wanted to start with an original donation. And the town set up that policy, which was ten thousand dollars, which was, um, predicted to make five hundred dollars a year in interest. And then the bottom fell out of the, uh, out of, out of that idea, and it went down to about sixteen dollars, uh, well, I think it was thirty-six dollars one year. And Kathy has graciously been funding the scholarship, and her sisters actually have been giving money so that there's no problem that original principal does, never has to be touched, and, and we do have that in a policy. But we would need to rewrite a policy if she is to give us enough money so that she would, um, uh, so that, um, we would be able to do that. She would like that to last forever and go on forever. She would like the amount of money in there to fund the scholarship forever. So, um, we need to take a look at that, and the, and the trustees will need to be, um, writing a new policy. So I'll, I'll keep, I'll let you know next month what else I find out from, um, the town.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Look forward to working through the details to make that happen. Um, I said I had one item of my own. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted, um, through Casey. Um, I said I had one item of my own. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted, um, through Casey, uh, by a member of the new Board of Trustees in Dedham. Uh, I don't know how much you've been following Dedham's travails, but they have, uh, managed to lose all of their trustees and several successive short-term library directors. And so I was contacted by somebody who's a new member of the Board of Trustees, knew that we were working on finding a successor for the director and thought we might have some useful ideas on how they could go search for a director who would last more than a couple of months. So I sent the gentleman, uh, a couple of pages of overview material that Bernie Lynch had shared with us early in our process, and then had a half hour to an hour, very nice conversation with him, mainly along the lines of explaining what the different boxes on the flow chart meant. And also any thoughts I had about how that might change with Dedham's circumstances. Uh, and he was very pleased. And, uh, so I took it as an example of when other towns and other libraries need something done. They looked to us as a role model, as an example. And here was a very tangible case where they, they really needed a role model and an example. And they came to us and they went away feeling they'd made a good choice. So I thought that was a, a good reflection on how we got to this point. Uh, search warrants?
There were none.
And miscellaneous advisories?
No miscellaneous advisories.
Okay. Staff and public remarks. Carla, let's start with you. Got any remarks? What are you reading?
Oh, you, Carla, Carla.
There you go.
My daughter was coming home and I didn't want to hear that. Right now I'm reading Anthony Horowitz's, um, Moonflower Murders. It's his latest book. I'm a big fan. I love murder mysteries and, uh, he's a really good writer.
And Carla has started her, she's in the midst of what, number five course for your master's degree?
Uh, number four. And then I'm doing, um, I'm hoping to sign up for two courses in January. Um, a reference course and then some ILS. Great.
Lydia, what have you got for us?
I just finished a book called Unfollow, A Memoir of Loving and Leaving the Westboro Baptist Church. It's by, um, Megan Phelps Roper, who's, uh, part of the, she was part of the Phelps family that, uh, is notorious for uh, picketing soldiers' funerals and holding up outrageous inflammatory signs. Uh, I thought it was fantastic. I, I, I think extremists and cults are fascinating. So, uh, it was, it was really cool to have an, an inside glimpse into, um, what her upbringing was like and a better understanding of these people, how they, um, they really felt like they were doing God's work. They were doing the right thing. Um, and the kids were raised indoctrinated that way and it made sense at the time. But she did find a head on her.
Ooh, shivers. Casey, what have you got on your reading list?
Sorry, I don't have any recommendations. I've been very busy.
Aw, poor baby.
I know.
Okay. Carla, we'll, uh, we'll go to you next.
Um, I'm actually, um, just started, um, Squeeze Me, which is Carl Hyacinth's latest book. Um, and you can read Carl Hyacinth. He is just, um, an amazing Floridian, uh, who, who both loves and hates his state. And he, he just, it's just amazing. Within 10 pages, I've read, um, uh, you know, about 50 sentences that just have made me smile and, uh, and recognize his talent. He's just, he, he is an amazing, he just has such a gift about writing about Florida and people in general. And one of the things I've learned about Carl Hyacinth since we, um, owned property in Florida is what an advocate he is for, um, conservation and all the things that have made Florida what it is in the last 50 years. So, uh, and not an advocate for them, advocate against, um, against progress.
Isn't he a longtime journalist who, uh, did the exposes or feature articles on many of the things that he then trashed in his novels?
Yes, yes. And his novels are full of all kinds of, um, true characters, which is really interesting too. But, um, uh, and he has, uh, compilations of those articles, actually, several of his books. Yeah. So that's what I'm reading. And I'm also listening to a podcast that's really painful. Um, just thought I'd mention it because it's really fascinating for anybody who might be interested in social work. Um, it's called Do No Harm, and it's about, um, several couples who, um, the Texas, um, Child Protective Services, uh, took away their children. And then the peoples, the people have to fight to get their children back. Um, because they were, they were, um, suspected of child abuse because they brought their child in because of, you know, an injury, a very innocent injury. Um, and it, it's so painful that I can't listen to the whole hour at once. I have to stop and go back to it because it's, it's so frustrating to me to have to listen to these parents who, whose children were gone for months on end or, you know, even years. Um, really, really hard to listen to. But if you're interested at all in, um, social work, it might be, it's, might be something that you would be interested in listening to.
Ooh, okay.
Sorry.
Let me move, let me move next to Sarah.
Well, I was inspired by Marguerite at our previous meeting. Um, I had gotten a copy of All the Devils Are Here from my mom as soon as it came out. And she read it and mailed it to me and it was sitting in the paper box waiting until Marguerite mentioned that she had just read the latest Louise Penny. So I have read it once. I'm reading through it again because I know that there's stuff that I missed the first time. And, um, I'm, I'm definitely seeing a lot more pieces of it the second read through. So I guess I didn't pay as much attention the first time as I should have.
It's COVID.
Well, Marguerite, that buildup, uh, what have you got for our reading list this month?
Well, I'm reading the new, I read the new Ian Tyler, Redhead by the Side of the Road. And, um, it's about this man who's very, um, you, you think he's very easygoing and easy to get along with, but he's really secretly got, um, very bad case of OCD. He hides it kind of a calm facade and everything was going all right in his life until his, um, longtime girlfriend kind of gets sick of the facade. So she left him and it shook him up. So it's a good story. I'm also trying to read, uh, Talking to Strangers by Malcolm Gladwell. And oh, he just writes so, um, the truth so poignantly that, um, you, you can't read too much of it. He writes about, you know, how, um, how Bernie Madoff talked to people and why people believed him and how Castro, um, got people to believe him and why Sylvia Plath was led along by toxic positivity. And then in the midst of it, he will talk about, um, uh, uh, how blacks in America are, um, spoken to by police and legal people. And he doesn't talk about the cases that get, um, that are on the front page of the news or on 60 Minutes. He talks about, um, everyday things that happen apparently every place. And, uh, a lot of it is gripping and, uh, makes you want to turn away because, you know, how come I didn't know about it? And how come I, it, it just makes you feel terrible about yourself. So it's a, it's a very, uh, it's a tough read. And, um, I don't know if I'm going to be able to finish it. So, but it's true. So I'm trying to finish it.
That book is particularly good as an audiobook. It has, um, uh, audio clips of the, the real people talking.
Oh, that, that, that opening scene, that poor woman that committed suicide in jail. Oh, just.
Well, we're Debbie Downers today, Marguerite.
What?
I said, we're both Debbie Downers today.
Yes, but, um, Redhead by the Side of the Road was good because his girlfriend is a realist.
Marguerite, when, uh, many, several decades ago, um, when I was living in the Washington DC area and the Washington football team was, uh, on top of the world, there was a story that appeared in the Washingtonian Magazine about one of the veteran star football players, black, who had gone to a party, you know, with a big, uh, big name, lots of rich people. And, uh, a woman there who was, had a lot of money, but not much else, came up to him and wanted to know, uh, if he could arrange to have somebody killed for her. And when they talked to her later, she said as, you know, as if it was the most natural thing in the world, that she just assumed that anyone who was black either was a murderous gangster or new one. And.
I'm going to try to find that book on tape, uh, Lyddie. Maybe it will be easier to, uh, listen to than turn the page. Turning the page is the hottest spot.
Turning the page. Are you here, Donna?
I'm going to, I'm going to forget I heard that, John.
What you been reading? Oh, you need a mic on.
Are you talking to me now?
I am.
Okay. Well, I took Charlotte's recommendation and I'm reading The Year of Wonders about the plague by Geraldine Brooks. And it's really good. It's engaging me. I like it very much.
Good.
Good. Uh, George?
Um, I've been reading, uh, a lot for work. Um, I was reading a book called The Origins of Art and the Biological Origins of Art, and it goes way back in human history, um, as far as why we tend to find things pretty, why we like colors a certain way. Um, and it was really interesting because I paired it up with a, a number of articles, recent articles of, of studies that have, that have been done during COVID now, when they look at, you know, people's buying preferences. And, um, it's, COVID's really turned a lot of things on its ear because, uh, you know, the feeling was always that, well, in, you know, especially in retail, face-to-face, that's when people make more decisions. And actually, that's not the case, that a lot of the things that hold true in real life, hold true online as well. Um, we tend to act the same way online impulsively, you know, making buying decisions and, um, responding to things in that way. So, uh, it's, it's been interesting. I'd like to read something more fun, but I don't know if I want to read anything that reads reading. I don't know.
Yeah, don't read that.
I don't think I'll go near that.
It sounds.
What about you, John?
A little like Vance Packard's The Hidden Persuaders from the 50s?
Oh gosh, yeah. The Subliminal?
Yeah. Well, I will wrap this up. Uh, my recommended reading is page A11 from today's New York Times. And let me explain why. Back when I was in graduate school at University of Pennsylvania, one of my best friends was a flamboyant, uh, guy from Peru named Francisco Sigostin. We used to call him the mad Peruvian. He was very good. He and I went out for a drink because we both got our, qualified for our PhDs in the same week, on the same day. And all of us who knew him said, this guy is a natural. He's going to be successful in politics. And he did go back to his native Peru after doing some work with the UN. And he's been an accomplished academic and he's been an accomplished engineer, analyst, researcher. And as of today, he is the president of Peru.
Whoa.
He was just named by the legislature, uh, to replace the guy they picked, to replace the guy they threw out. And the article on page A11 is full of the travails of Peru. But it also has a very nice picture of Francisco, who has aged an awful lot better than the rest of us from that period. So, uh, that was worth the price of admission for me.
Good.
Okay. Uh, anybody have anything else? Our next, uh, meeting is scheduled for December 15th. And, uh, we're going to be getting together in subgroups a number of times between now and then.
Yep.
With everybody, uh, a good and low attendance Thanksgiving. And, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone second?
I'll second, huh?
Okay. Uh, George seconds and, uh, roll call vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Marguerite?
Yes.
Donna?
Is muted.
Donna's in favor.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm in favor and we are done. Thanks, everybody for hanging in.
Carla. Carla, I love Camille.